Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the January 9th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. We have one announcement, and that is that the city of Bellingham will host its annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at City Hall on Monday, January 16th from noon to 1:00. The emcee this year is Clyde Ford again. He'll be joined by the Coulson Chorus. Speakers will include our own Mayor Kelly and Daryl Hiller of the Lemmy Nation. It's a free and family-friendly event, and if you cannot attend, please watch it live on BTV10 or also live streaming on the web at the COB.org, the city's website. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
And Terry Bornham is excused.
Yes, thank you so much. To let people know, there is one addition to the agenda. It will be handled during the mayor's report. It's a reappointment of someone to the Civil Service Commission. Before we begin the three public hearings today, I'd like to just make a short announcement, which is that I have been selected as this year's city council president. Roxanne Murphy will be serving as our president pro tem, and as our mayor pro tem, April Barker will be serving. Our first public hearing today, do we have any public comments for that? Is ES 513, which is the Holly Street Overlay Parking Removal. Ted, should we begin with you?
Yes, please. Good evening. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. As Council President Lillquist mentioned, this is a public hearing. The reason for the public hearing is related to a Capitol project resurfacing of Holly Street, and that resurfacing project will require the removal of some on-street parking along Holly, simply due to new standards related to turn radiuses at the intersections and sight distance, things of that nature, where we have some non-conforming spaces. When we go out and do the work, we'll have to make sure that everything meets today's standards. Removal of parking on an arterial does take council action. It's not something that can be done administratively, so we want to provide a little bit of information about the project tonight, have the public hearing, allow folks to comment, and it doesn't take an ordinance, it's just a vote to approve from the city council. If the council does approve this, we'll be coming back to your next council meeting with a bid award for the actual project. So with that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Freeman Anthony, who's the project engineer, to talk a little bit more about what we're doing and why we need to remove parking.
Thank you, Ted. Freeman Anthony, Public Works. The Holly Street Overlay is this year's overlay for 2017. It's been on the books for a few years, but we've pushed it off as we've taken a look at larger corridor studies and specifically looking at bike facilities on that corridor. We continue to do that. We've added, as you know, right now, there's a Lakeway corridor study, and these are all basically tied together because it is a continuous key link through Bellingham. However, we really need to move forward with this overlay because of the condition of the pavement, and there's a bunch of other things that we would like to do now, and so rather than delay it continually for those corridor studies, we're going to move ahead with the overlay and looking at it through the typical overlay lens, which is resurfacing the pavement and then where needed, doing ADA improvements. Typically, that's not such a big deal, however, as you know, with the brick-and-bollards, there is a substantial reconsideration of how things are laid out for that. And we've spent a couple of years doing downtown design standards work and have landed on what we call is an appropriate aesthetic ADA upgrade to the existing brick-and-bollard design ethos that you find downtown. So if you noticed recently, we did the Champion Water Main project, and at the intersections of Champion and Cornwall and Champion and Railroad, you'll see that there's a new updated brick-and-bollard layout that meets ADA requirements while at the same time preserving the brick-and-bollard feel that we've had. So it was important to go through that process to get a feel for how that was going to be implemented. We finished that process last year. We feel quite good about what the results were. A few lessons learned about how to do kind of a complicated paver rehab to meet those ADA requirements, so now we're ready to go. So that was a big component of this. In addition to that, we're going to be doing some tree well widening, basically to promote health of the existing trees. A couple of trees, fairly small, will come down, some new ones will go up, some pavement restoration, curb, sidewalk, that kind of thing, to get it in good shape for the surfacing overlay. And so that's really the entire scope of the project. There'll be stormwater and some water mains and associated utility work. Now, what Ted mentioned was that is, as part of this, we're redoing the curb returns, and we're doing those in such a way that we can keep it open for future bike facilities and not sort of get penned in at one end or the other on what we might do in the future. Along with that, we'll be doing some, basically some corrections to some of the radii so we can get our street sweepers through there. In the process of doing that, some parking spots are getting smaller and will be substandard. We've also identified some other areas where we can shoehorn them in, so the net change is a loss in six spots, which I think is pretty respectable considering the amount of work we're doing on this corridor. One thing that's worth noting is that net six is where we're at right now, but I think when we actually get this done, we can probably be creative and working with Eric Johnston in traffic, maybe try to make, bring that net impact maybe down to below six. So we're going to definitely try to do that as we go through the process, but at this rate, that's what we think we've got.
I would just add quickly that consistent with our process, we did bring this to the Transportation Commission. Transportation Commission does have advisory role when it comes to parking as well as other transportation-related issues. They did support the removal of up to six spaces, and as Freeman mentioned, we're going to do everything we can to reduce that number. That would be the maximum that would be removed. The Transportation Commission's primary concern was that we continue to work on the bicycle facility, and that will be an ongoing process that will require quite a bit of public involvement, both with the downtown business owners, property owners, and just the public at large that's interested in the bicycle network throughout the city. And the final note is, consistent with the downtown city center plan and the parking policies related to that, we are trying to do everything we can to maximize parking, existing parking downtown, and earlier this year, I guess late last year, we did have a project along State Street where we were able to add some parking spaces downtown. So we're really looking at the total parking spaces downtown and trying not to remove any and add where we can. So although we've removed, we will be removing a few along Holly, we did add several, many more than what we are removing along State Street earlier or late last year.
And I'll add one more point, just on timing. You might say, hmm, the overlay in January. Well, we really did strive to get this right out of the gates this year because we understand from the downtown business communities, the best time to have things kind of messy down there is first part of the year. So we're looking for notice of proceed date, last day of January, or probably 30th, and to get right into this such that we can have things cleaned up by summertime.
Okay, before we begin the public hearing, are there any questions, council?
Gene.
Real quick, were those six, where did people park, where did they go when they parked at those spots? Were they assigned, or they're just open?
Just open on-street parking. Yeah, just on-street parking, available to anyone, metered spots that would be going away.
Councilor Vargas?
Ted, I know you touched on this briefly, but I know we've had a lot of requests from the public to put a bike lane on Holly. Are we going to try a pilot program?
Yeah, that is our intention. The study that Freeman referenced is really building on what we're trying to accomplish along Lakeway, looking at what type of bike facility would we want to put on Holly. It was identified in the bicycle master plan as needing further study because it is somewhat complicated due to the on-street parking and the general-purpose lanes and whether or not you can fit a bike facility in there without either taking away a general-purpose lane or removing parking, and also whether we would want to put in a bike lane, a buffered bike lane, or a fully separated cycle track using perhaps the parked cars as the buffer between the traveled lane and the bike facility. And that's the study that is ongoing right now, looking at things like the turning movements off of Holly. We certainly believe that there's capacity along Holly if you were to, for instance, take a general-purpose lane away, but you may have issues at the intersections as people are making turning movements. When you have pedestrian activity, people can't make the turn, clear the lane because pedestrians are crossing. We want to take a good, hard look at that. We also want to really finalize whether or not the public, the commuters, the cyclists, the business owners would want to see a fully separated facility at the expense of a general-purpose lane, or is a buffered bike lane adequate. Part of that will likely be a pilot. We think that that makes a lot of sense to go in and do something in a temporary fashion before you spend all the money to make whatever improvements would be determined to be final, see how that works, and then go forward based on that information, what you see on the pilot. So that is the strategy. We're working closely with community development so that we can get that economic development business aspect of it as well as the transportation planning, transportation engineering side of it.
Councilor Barker?
Was part of your study looking at the ADA parking and to see if that's going to be impacted in ways where we're taking away those six, we could maybe include more ADA parking closer?
We are including the addition of one ADA stall here and an ADA ramp to get at it, so we do have already what we would consider at, you know, our standard ADA stalls within that area, but we're actually adding our ADA ramp down to one now, which is kind of a first for us.
Okay, there are no more questions. Now we'll begin the public hearing. Is there anybody signed up to speak? Okay, I forgot to mention, by the way, that we will have our 15-minute public comment period right after the three hearings, so those of you who did sign up for the public comment period will be coming to that. Now we'd like to open up the comments for the public hearing on this street project and the removal, possible removal of just six parking spaces. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the council.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve this plan. You'll be coming forward with the actual bid on the project. I just want to make one comment. ADA means Americans with Disability Act, and the boards of those R2D2 things and the bricks you're referring to, in this case, have the textured bump on them so that visually disabled people know when they're coming to the curb.
Absolutely. I would highly recommend, if you haven't taken a look at the improvements at Railroad and Champion, it'd be a great, it's a great way to see what's coming along.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve this project was up to six parking spaces removed in Holly Street, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0 with one excused absence. Thank you so much. We will now go on to the second hearing of the night. Actually, this is a hearing on a resolution authorizing the relinquishment of a portion of a utility easement located within the vacated G Street, and this, I believe, is down in the waterfront region where we've already vacated the street, but we apparently retained an easement, a utility easement. Ted, shall I turn this over to you again?
Yes, thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works. Thank you, that is a good introduction to what this is. You may recall, we had a few of these late last year related to the waterfront area where previously the city had vacated various rights-of-way along the waterfront area, but retained an easement for utility, franchise utilities, water, sewer, stormwater. This is very similar. I'll get you oriented. Rotor up here at the top, F Street, right here, and what we're talking about today is the previously vacated G Street. This is right adjacent to Sanitary Service Company, and the request before the council today is to relinquish the remaining utility easement. The request came from Sanitary Service, the adjacent property owner, actually the property owner, their property is now encumbered with our easement. We've gone through the analysis to determine whether or not the easement is in fact surplus to our needs, and we have determined at the staff level that it indeed is. We do not have any franchise utilities running through that easement. We have adequate right-of-way in the area to serve any future development, and it is a staff recommendation that the easements be relinquished. The purpose of this, as you may recall in previous discussions with council where Sanitary Service is proposing to convert their garbage hauling trucks to compressed natural gas, city council supported that, city staff certainly supported that position in terms of reduced emissions from garbage trucks. This area is where they are proposing to build the filling station. We had previously thought that this area was already, the easement was relinquished. Going through the records, determined that that had never happened, so that is why it's before council today. And I will say that you will see, if this is approved by council in a come-in meeting, a request to vacate the easement or relinquish the easement on the other side of the right-of-way. You can see the hatched area we're talking about, just that portion today, but there is an easement that is on top of the vacated G Street right-of-way on the other side that the port would like to have relinquished as well, so we were not able to do that today. It will take a separate public hearing for council to consider that. So with that brief presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so before we begin the hearing, are there questions from the council? Seeing no questions, are there anybody signed up to comment on this one?
Yep.
So I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would anyone would like to comment on the vacation or the relinquishment?
...the American people and the city of Bellingham, the people of Bellingham, I would say.
Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak at the microphone with regard to the relinquishment of this utility easement?
I did, I'm sorry, I did fail to mention that there is no financial transaction typically when the city has granted a utility easement. It's at no cost. The property owner grants it to the city at no cost, so when those easements are relinquished, there is also no cost for that since the city did not pay for the easement.
Right, so to clarify, this property is not owned by the city. We have no ownership rights. We only have the right to lay utilities, and since we have no desire to lay utilities in this location, we have no need for the utility easement. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yeah. The underlying property is not owned by the city.
I'm going to ask one more time, is there anybody who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring the public hearing to a close and bring it back to the city council.
Move approval of the resolution authorizing relinquishment of a portion of the utility easement located within vacated G Street.
We have a motion and a second, I believe, to approve a resolution authorizing relinquishment of a portion of the utility easement which is located within G Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that resolution passes 6-0 with one excused absence. The next hearing is on a resolution authorizing relinquishment of another utility easement, this time located within the vacated portion of South State Street. So this has some similarities, doesn't it?
Yes, Ted Carlson, it does, although I will clarify, it's not South State Street, it's just South Street. So this is a previously vacated right-of-way off of 30th down in the south neighborhood, and the previously vacated right-of-way extends directly into the I-5 right-of-way. So it's a vacated right-of-way abutting I-5 between I-5 and 30th. Again, this was brought forward to council at the request of the underlying property owner, who currently has an easement on their property for city utilities. Again, we retained an easement when the right-of-way was vacated. The request is to now relinquish that easement as it's been determined that the easement's surplus to the city's needs. There is no need to install utilities in this vacated right-of-way to serve anybody. We don't have any intentions to do anything with it, and the right-of-way has already been vacated, so at this point, it's an easement unneeded by the city that is encumbering the underlying property owner's property, prohibiting them from being able to fully utilize their property. So staff's recommendation is to relinquish the easement. I would say as, anytime the city gets a request like this, we have a committee of staff, folks from all of the departments, so Public Works, Planning, that take a look at these types of requests to make sure that, given the land use, given the potential need for utilities, there is no remaining need, and that was the determination this time.
Okay, are there any questions from the council before we open the hearing? Okay, was anybody signed up for this hearing? Okay, so once again, no one has signed up, so I'll now open the floor. If anyone would like to come forward and speak with regard to the resolution authorizing relinquishment of a utility easement located within a vacated South Street. If you'd like to come forward to the microphone, you may speak. For the record, please just state your name.
So my name is Jonah Laharn. I'm not sure about what all is the planning for this city because I don't normally take part in the decision-making, but I know that I've lived here for a long time, and I know that this is a complete bypass on the part of the public and the people who live here. And the fact that we don't really talk straight and direct to the people and ask the permission of the people who, who and what we feel of where we live, kind of makes it so we lose our true freedom and democracy and process of doing things to a corporate institution. If you want to sell out your country and your state and your city, be all means, we should inform people about what's going on, not just institutions.
Thank you, Jonah. This is a public hearing. This is one of the ways in which we have public process and allowed opportunities to hear from the public before we make any decisions. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward to speak to the council? Seeing none, I'll bring the hearing to a close and bring it back to the city council.
Move approval of the resolution authorizing relinquishment of utility easement located within vacated South Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is to approve a resolution authorizing relinquishment of a utility easement within vacated South Street, State Street. Again, as the previous one, this is not property that we own, and we don't have a street in this location, it's just an easement. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that also passes 6-0 with one excused absence. Thank you so much, everyone. We are through with our three public hearings. We will now go on to the 15-minute public comment period. During the public comment period, people are given three minutes to speak on a topic to the city council. There is a timer clock over here to help people keep track of their time. We ask people to start wrapping it up. There's a buzzer which goes off, I think, with 30 seconds left to go, so that doesn't mean stop, it means you've got 30 seconds left to go. There are six people signed up in order. There are three people who want to speak on a similar topic. It's Tina McKinn, and then Lisa Whale, and then Andrew Echols. Would those three people like to come forward, in turn?
I'm Tina McKinn, and I'm here today. Well, first, I'd like to acknowledge the land that we're on is unceded, close, salish territory, and that's something important for us to acknowledge. And I also wanted to acknowledge that I am in great support of the blue group's request to make this sanctuary city in a meaningful way. And then my other thing that I'm here to talk about is that I'm asking for the city council to continue supporting, I know earlier in the year you, or last year, you supported a unanimous resolution in support of the Standing Rock Sioux, and I'm asking that you continue with your commitment to that resolution by divesting our city from the banks that are financing the Dakota Access Pipeline. Currently, the city of Bellingham uses US Bank, which is one of the 17 major banks funded, and I'm asking that in, as a change for that, instead that we switch our money to a locally-owned credit union, which would not only withdraw us from supporting causes that might be in opposition to our community's values due to the different laws that govern, sorry, I'm a little nervous. The different laws that govern credit unions versus banks. So because the rules are stricter about where the money can be, our money as a community would be safer. We wouldn't be funding the Dakota Access Pipeline or subsequent projects which we know will affect our community greatly, like the Kinder Morgan Pipeline, which I don't know if US Bank is tied to, but I'm sure that all the major banks will have some sort of stake in it. So again, if we could switch our money out of the bank and into a credit union, better for our community, better for our money as a community, better for the environment, and better for justice. So there you go. Thanks.
Excuse me, I forgot to mention something. One of the things, we have kind of a standing rule here in the city council with regard to applause. Generally, we don't allow applause, the same way we don't allow boos or, you know, put-downs of people who are speaking. If you would like this appreciation, maybe just say it directly to the speaker. Our next person, by the way, thank you Tina, is Elisa Whale.
Hello, city council. I am up here today to speak in support of the Standing Rock Sioux tribe, who is in opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline, as you well aware. Back in September last year, the city council passed a resolution as 1,000 people stood outside these chambers at a rally to support Standing Rock. The Standing Rock Sioux tribe is now asking individuals and communities across the globe to take the next step and support them by divesting from banks that invest or provide financial assistance in the construction of the pipeline. It is my understanding that the city of Bellingham banks with US Bank. The US Bank is one of more than 17 global financial institutions that are providing financial assistance in the building of the Dakota Access Pipeline. US Bank provides $1.7 million in credit lines to energy transfer partner, a parent company of Dakota Access Pipeline. I have come here to ask the city of Bellingham to take the next step beyond the resolution and move your money to another financial institution. There are numerous regional and local banks that I'm sure would be more suitable for your banking needs who do not provide assistance to the pipeline. Just to be aware, Citibank, Wells Fargo, and Bank of America are also investing in providing financial assistance. Seattle has recently introduced legislation that would end the city's $3 billion contract with Wells Fargo. Boulder, Portland, and Minneapolis are also taking steps to move their cities' monies as well. I hope the city of Bellingham will join these other cities. You have passed a resolution in support of Standing Rock, but I don't feel that that's enough. It is now time for the city of Bellingham to take action beyond words on a piece of paper and divest from US Bank to support the communities in North Dakota and their water supply. Since I have a few more minutes, I'd also like to say that I also support the students at Western that are asking for the city of Bellingham to become a sanctuary city. It's extremely important that we make sure that everybody in our community is safe, not just certain people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Andrew, and then after Andrew, Mr. Jonah Langhorne again.
Hi there, city council. I'm speaking on the, my name's Andrew Echols, I'm a resident here, and speaking on the same topic of the city's banking with US Bank and the Dakota Access Pipeline. A few things, I think, I gather my thoughts I'd like to add. I'm in support of the city moving out of US, moving some money out of US Bank and ideally moving into a credit union. I'm not sure of all the legal elements, so a smaller regional bank as opposed to if a credit union doesn't work would also be better. But just to speak to this, as Lisa mentioned, all these cities are taking action, and there's a really major movement with, I don't know if everyone's seen- a really major movement with, I don't know if everyone's seen, across the country, a lot of the solidarity with Standing Rock has been really directly targeted at the banks funding the pipeline, because it's an effective strategy. Without the financial backers, the, the company can't build the pipeline, and it's at a point where the protests and the movement has been so successful that it really is a questionable investment, and people actually moving their money and saying this is immoral and this is, we can't really, our whole climate future, we really critically need to have a rapid transition away from fossil fuel dependencies, or while every pipeline is being fought. But people actually moving their money and telling the bank they're moving their money because of their investments in these projects is effective, because eventually it comes to an economic point where it's just not worth it for the bank to keep investing in this project when they're losing so much. And with big cities like Seattle, Minneapolis, Boulder, and Bellingham included actually taking this action, this can make a win over the Dakota Access Pipeline, which may not be the territory we're on, but it's a win for the whole movement to transition to renewable energy and support indigenous sovereignty. I know Seattle has a resolution. I, I'm, we're all part of the Bellingham No Dapple Coalition, and we're a small group here today, but there's been, the big marches, biggest marches I've seen in Bellingham have been all around this issue, and we're ready to mobilize people to support this issue. But we'd be happy to meet with any one of you that would like to introduce legislation, and we could go through the Seattle legislation and work together to put something concrete to the council. I'm sure you all have plenty of things to work through on the legal end, but we're here and ready to work with you to make this a serious thing and a serious move, because we're really, this is a really powerful act that we can take to have a meaningful impact in a time where we're not expecting the federal government or the state of North Dakota to really take the action that's necessary. We, as a people's movement, can make the change that's necessary, so. And I'd also like to add, I also support the request and demands of the Blue Group on Western's campus. With that, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Jonah Laharn again, if you'd like to speak. And then after Jonah, Joseph McDonald.
So, like I said, my name's Jonah Laharn. I, I face a lot of adversity or struggle here in, in my own community, and I've, I've been out to the far area. I'm here to talk about general welfare of, of the state of people, meaning more the, when we reach a state of, of being homeless or not having a place to live, I would like to recommend that we find a place, like a, a greater setup for people, for different divisions of, you know, emotional and mental states of, you know, whether they were post-traumatic stress, or people with disabilities, or whatever their, their reasoning is. My plea is, or, or plight maybe, is more on behalf of, of the people who don't have housing, who don't have a place to go, how increasingly we're more without homes and houses as a nation and availability to make that so. Jobs, work, things are harder for, for more people to acquire than needs. And I've seen more and more increase of homeless people out on these streets, and I myself currently, unfortunately, have lost my house. And it's not impossible for me to, to return to a structure of creating everything, but it is extremely difficult with the way things are currently in our, our economic, our, our policies, our, our manner of being, like where we treat each other. It's really, it becomes really hard to really manifest what you need, or anybody, me, all of my family and friends, in order to get their needs provided for. And so I recommend kind of making things universally accessible in a way that, you know, perhaps there's a, an open land space, or a building project, or volunteers and donations, and, you know, tap into the charitable side of our, our humanity that, that lives here in this city and at large out in the country. I'm, I'm, I have grown with huge frustration and, and upsetness that we don't really take care of the needs of individuals. We kind of just like throw, throw crumbs at people and say, hey, this is, this is what we have to offer, but we don't really take care of the situation, and, and it's increasing, and, and the population of people is growing largely, and, and there's less and less access and resource to, for people who are in need. And, and there's a greater wealthy amount of people, or a greater wealth of people with a greater amounts of money, less care for people, and, and less interest in doing the, the right thing and, and doing what's good for people down here on the low where they live on the concrete, or don't have a place to go, or are, you know, soul-searching, or, or just hurt in general. Like, a lot of people are just in a process of, of trying to find their own path, and, and through that, a lot of people are, are undergoing a lot of treacherous circumstances. And as well, I, I myself have faced many, I don't know about legal, but feeling insecure as an individual in my own homeland. And I don't know if that's Bellingham, I don't know if that's Washington, I don't know if that's the United States, but I'm growing less and less equippeded to be able to say the Pledge of Allegiance, because that has less validity to me each day with the way we act towards each other, how we pass each other on the street, and don't see who and what and where, and, and don't give any reconciliation to the fact that we, we really do need help and, and donation and suggestion and, and just power of recommendation, and, and just togetherness as a community and as people. So, and I'm just, it's just kind of like a call for unity, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next person is Joseph McDonald. And after Joseph, Galen Hertz.
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. The city of Bellingham is in a holy war with the false doctrines of Christianity. Many, many people claim to be Christian in this city, from police officers to doctors and nurses, along with the good people who address the social problem of homelessness. And if you consider all the people who claim Jesus was a good, poor teacher, but not the Son of God, all of them can be at risk of being deceived. I believe the great lie that surely you shall not die lives on through the concepts of heaven and hell. In Ecclesiastic 9:5, it says, "The dead don't know anything." How can you praise the Lord or burn in hell forever if you don't know anything? I, I also think everyone has to ask themselves the question, is Jesus Christ so messed up and sick and sadistic that seventy to a hundred years of sin justify billions upon billions of years of torture? That doesn't sound like justice to me. I think that, that supports an argument for atheism. In Ezekiel 20:18, it says, "I will devour, devour you with fire and bring you to ashes." I think that verse contradicts the popular belief of non-gone-burned hell. How can anyone possibly be in heaven when Jesus said in John 3:13, "No man has ascended up into heaven but he that came down from heaven"? And wouldn't Lazar be mad if, if he was taken down from heaven to, to live in this world again? And if people were already in heaven, why would Jesus need to come back with a reward on resurrection day? I think with the mark of the beast coming soon, Jehovah God will intervene for his people. I hope and pray in the time of trouble ahead, people will fight the good fight, and remember the Bible verse, Philippians 4:13, which says, "I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me." Thank you, and God bless and miracle while still here.
Thank you. And now, Galen.
Hello, my name is Galen Hertz. I'm the Associated Students Local Issues Coordinator. I wanted to speak about housing today. A report was released last week by the Muljack Group that found that the median home price in Bellingham was $364,0250. And last year, that's up from, compared to 2005, that's up 12.1%. Our home value increases are some of the highest in the nation. So if you do the lender's math, that your annual home, your annual income times 2.5 equals the house price that you can afford, you have to make $145,000 to buy a median home here. And according to the Census Bureau American Community Survey, only 11% of Bellingham families make that type of money. If we stay on this track, our city's going to become a playground for the rich. Rent increases are also outpacing wage increases. For us students, especially those without rich parents, high rents have a really negative impact on our lives. We have to buy overpriced textbooks, pay tuition, and then on top of that, we get hit with increasingly high rents. Many students have to deal with shady landlords that don't give them back their deposit, or live in substandard conditions with black mold and other health problems, problems that aren't solved by the rental inspection program. From my research and understanding so far, I believe the root of our housing challenge is twofold. One, it's a housing shortage, and two, it's a highly speculative real estate market that treats housing's purpose as a commodity instead of a home. I also want to, sorry, the, the housing challenge is visible in the streets, like the previous speaker mentioned. I live near the Lighthouse Mission, and when I was walking to my car this morning, I noticed two cars with people sleeping in them in this cold. The challenge can be overcome by the community coming together and advocating for the solutions we need. I also want to note that there are solutions already underway and thank the community for them. I walked past Ellis Street yesterday and saw these new affordable and dense apartments being built for low-income seniors funded by the Bellingham Housing Levy, but we must do more. In my, in my next quarter of Western, in addition to meeting and organizing with students, I hope to meet with community leaders, neighborhood groups, and housing justice advocates to hear their perspectives on the housing challenge and each group's proposed solutions. I'm also doing a survey of student housing experiences. The Associated Students Legislative Affairs Council and myself will analyze the data and ideas. We plan to present these best ideas from this community-based process in our AS Local Issues Agenda, which will release publicly in April. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings to an end our 15-minute public comment period. We'll go on now to our committee reports. The first committee this afternoon, this afternoon, was the Public Works and Public Safety Committee, and that meeting was chaired by Councilwoman Roxanne Murphy.
Thank you, President Lilicust. We had one agenda item. It was an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 budget for the purchase of a fire engine. This was unanimously recommended by the committee this afternoon, and I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve an ordinance which amends the 2017-18 budget to pay for the purchase of a fire engine. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that ordinance passes six-zero with one excused absence.
End of committee.
Thank you, Roxanne. Our second committee this afternoon was the Community Economic Development Committee, and that was chaired by Councilwoman Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, President. We had a report out on a presentation on the 2016 Bellingham Sea Feast Festival by Deb Granger. Just a little bit of information, this, this was funded by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, otherwise called LTAC. And this, this project was selected as the signature event following a review of almost 20 applications, and Bellingham Sea Feast was awarded $75,000 in lodging tax revenue as seed money to start the event. We also have, it was for a three-year commitment, they will receive $50,000 for 2017, an additional for 2018, and at that time, we are hoping they will be sustainable and can take care of their, take care of their funding on their own. Just a couple of few things about it. It, I am chair of the LTAC Committee, so I will tell you that our, my, my experience on this was that everyone was very delighted with the results. We thought they did a tremendous, tremendous job for a very first-year event. They had almost 6,000 people attending and almost $90,000 in sponsors. For a first-year event, that is really remarkable. The LTAC did select this because it showcases Bellingham's rich maritime and thriving commercial fishing, fishing sector through education, entertainment, competitions, and food. This two-day event included many local partners devoted to the promotion of working waterfront and the importance it does hold to our community and our history. The activities included Fisher poets, races, kids' activities, tours, cooking, and even an oyster shucking contest. And the, the winner of that contest is our very own Chair, Michael Lilicust. So, they, I just wanted to thank Deb Granger, who gave us a presentation today, and on the excellent job that they did for the Bellingham Sea Feast. End of committee.
Okay, thank you. I just want to set the record straight, I was the slurper, not the shucker. It does make more sense. Know your strengths. Okay? We also had an executive session this afternoon. It was one item on potential litigation. The staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. It was for information only and discussion only, then no action was taken, executive session. Next, we return to approving minutes. We have two sets of minute, one for afternoon committee meetings, December 12th, and the other for the evening minutes of December 12th.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approving the minutes. Is there any corrections or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, six to zero. Time for old and new business. April?
So, on January 14th, from 10:00 AM to 3:30 at Wacom Community College Tyree Center, there's going to be the MLK Junior Human Rights Conference. It's helped put on by the Human Rights Task Force. I attended last year, and I strongly suggest that you attend if you have the time to. There's a lot of breakout sessions. You can go to the website if you have access, and you can find out the times where you can attend the different breakout sessions. If you can attend the whole thing, it's very inspiring, you'll be with a lot of like-minded people, and you can learn a lot about what other people are doing in the community. If you don't remember the times that I gave, you can look at my new blog, it's at AprilBarkerBellingham. It's an effort to try to find different ways in the new social media to help kind of dismantle the mystique behind what a council member does. I was not very involved politically before becoming a council member, and I do remember wondering exactly what people do outside of these meetings, so I'm doing my best to try to help you get to know me. But also, there's upcoming events and different things that I attend that I think you might like to attend, so you can always go there and see what I'm going to, and maybe you can attend as well. And so that's AprilBarkerBellingham.com, and you can get there also by going to the City Council website.
Roxanne?
I just wanted to say something that I think has been on the mind of our community and communities throughout Washington State. Go Seahawks.
Pinky?
On Friday, I attended the Third Annual Cannabis Alliance. I was one of the elected officials there, and they chose to reiterate things that they wanted us to keep in mind as elected officials, that right now, Washington State, these jobs, they are producing 20,000 jobs in the state of Washington through farmers, retailers, and ancillary jobs, and that they are now creating more tax dollars than both alcohol and tobacco combined in the state, which I thought was pretty incredible. And the third was, there is concern around the way our political system might go this year, and they asked if we could keep in mind that, that this is an issue that could be contentious in regards to discrimination if some of those things get taken away, and if people are penalized for the choices that they make, and to remind us that, that medical, medical cannabis is, is something that should be dealt with separately in regards to recreation. So those were their, those were their most important points that they wanted us as elected officials to be concerned and to note. So, thank you.
Okay. April again.
I kind of think it regards old business, but we have had quite a few constituents, constituents bring up the divesting, and it is very complex as some of the people talked today. And Brian has done a wonderful job in responding through email to try to explain exactly what we can and can't do, and the reasons why. Would it be possible to get him on a future agenda to explain that part of it?
Absolutely. You're talking about Brian Hansha. Yes.
I would like to also repeat the thanks I gave this afternoon. This Saturday, I was one of hundreds of people who attended a gathering, an interfaith gathering the Sikh community had up just north of town. There were members of all different kinds of faith communities there, kind of sharing a sense of community. We were welcomed by the Sikhs. It was a really great event. It was actually, had some nice It was actually, had some nice opening remarks by Mayor Kelly and also by County Executive Jack Louse, and our host was Seth Palciddu, who happens to also serve on the county council. Anything else under old and new business? Okay, great, let's go on to the mayor's report.
I won't be very long. I wanted to also echo that the event on Saturday night was very inspiring, and I love the comments by Noemi Ban, who is a local woman, she's, I think she's 90, 94 now, who was an actual Holocaust survivor. And when you hear her story, it makes it very real, as opposed to just reading about it or hearing about it from someone who didn't, who didn't live through it like she did and her family. So, so anyway, I found that was a really nice event, and I was glad to see so many people there. I have two reappointments to make. They both need your approval. I think you got the information on Robin Williams that was from the old, or new business. She's been on the Civil Service Commission for five years. She'd like to renew her membership, and I'm happy to appoint her. She's a former city employee, so she's also, has a lot of experience in city government and how, and how it works. So with that, I would like to appoint Robin Williams to the Civil Service, or reappoint her to the Civil Service Commission.
Move approval. We have a motion and a second to reappoint Robin Williams to the Civil Service Commission. Any further discussion? April?
So I had to learn what this commission does. We have many boards and commissions, and I've heard Wacom County might have more than any other county in the state because we have so much participation, which I think is wonderful. I want to thank the mayor for making sure that this got on the docket. I know that there's some things in motion as far as hiring are concerned, and one of the things on the next agenda is actually in response to things that we've talked about and kind of looking at our requirements and ensuring that there aren't barriers to employment so that we can make sure we can get a diverse cross-section of people that are qualified for the position. And so I appreciate you making sure that that got on here, and I look forward to hearing the results of their next meeting.
Thank you very much. And the other reappointment?
Excuse me, we need to take a vote on that first. All those in favor of the reemployment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. Kelly, go ahead.
Okay, the second reappointment is of Mike Smith to the Bellingham Arts Commission. Mike is a former member. He's usually very active in the Mayor's Arts Awards and the ongoing business of the committee, so I'm happy to reappoint him.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mike Smith to the Bellingham Arts Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, Mike is good, and he's been reappointed now. That passes six to zero with one excused absence.
I'm not done.
Not done, keep going then.
You probably don't know because you can't see what I'm doing down here, but when we have public comment, I make sure that I write down everybody's name and the issue that they brought up so that I can reflect on things that aren't part of city business now but should be part of city business. And so of course, I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight to speak. I know we all appreciate that. But both Galen and Jonah brought up something that's very dear to my heart, which is housing. And I just believe that, you know, we're doing so much in the city and the unfortunate thing is, we still have people in need, and that is a very disappointing thing, I know for all of you and especially for me. So I think at some point, I probably, even though we've heard it before, I'd like to bring in Tara and Samia and others to talk about the efforts that the city's doing and the things that hopefully others can do because while the city of Bellingham graciously and generously voted for a housing levy, which most communities don't have, so we have resources that we can put into these services and facilities, the federal government and the state government also have a big influence on the mental health that we all know many people in our community need and it's not available, and also the drug and alcohol treatment. So as we speak out on these issues, I would encourage everyone to speak to all levels of government and make sure that everybody knows, we are doing that. We are passing the message forward. But I think it's very important because not one of us can take care of the people in our community that need our help by ourselves. So with that, I just want to thank those two gentlemen for bringing up something that I probably talk about all the time and somebody else talks about now, so that's a good thing.
Okay, so you suggested we might, you might at a future date schedule another agenda item to talk about our ongoing efforts in housing and homelessness, and I would assume mental health plays into that as well, because one of our concerns is criminalizing mental illness, and it has to do with, you know, jail, but it's a housing issue as well.
Well, and I think that we're lucky because this issue came up several years ago when we were talking about increasing some of the penalties and expanding some of the laws having to do with lying and sitting and failure to respond. So as part of the task force that Dan and I and two other city of Bellingham employees are sitting on, you know, the integration of those things and not talking about housing by itself, but a continuum of services that need to come with housing, I think that we're doing, the community itself is doing much better at integrating the services, the housing, and the different levels of government and the local community that all need to participate. And I really appreciate the fact that we've got at least two or three groups going now. Dan sits on a different one than I do with the county and led by Ann Deacon from the Wacom County Health Department, which is very critical because the Health Department is the purveyor, so to speak, of a lot of the revenues that come into our community for mental health and healthcare and things like that. So I think that's great that Dan is helping on that group also.
So just a bit of business, is there any problem with another agenda item, future group? And Dan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just as part of that discussion, I'd love to have some type of presentation on House Bill 2263 so we can understand what our options are as a city that passed a couple years ago and--
Which one is that, Dan?
It's one-tenth of one percent for mental health, one-tenth of one percent for cultural activities. It's passed by the late Senator Andy Hill. Well, he led the charge on that one. So some of those dollars could go towards housing or housing-related programming for people who have mental health illness. So it's part of the discussion, I just would want to have that as part of what we discuss and talk about as options for the city.
Well, we need to look at all of our options, that's for sure. And we need to understand that the jail discussion is really interrelated with the housing and the services discussion. So, very complex, and I know we bring it up a lot, but I'm hoping that keeping you informed helps keep the public informed about what steps we are taking and also what the needs are.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else, Morphe, your marriage report?
Nothing.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda.
Approval. Or second?
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six to zero, one excused absence. Will we move on to our last item, which is final consideration of ordinances?
Agenda Bill 21453, in ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, adopting a transportation impact fee base rate and rate schedule for 2017.
Move third and final.
Roll call.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jean Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Lilicust?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
And Terry Bornammon is excused. Ordinance passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any business? Seeing no further, this is for the council, I adjourn our meeting.